Hi, how are you? Is my everything working okay?
I can hear you. I can see you.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Amy.
Yep.
Are you able to access and play those videos that?
Yes, I have them pulled up. I'm going to push play on one of these videos just to make sure that you can hear it. Will you? Can you hear that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Rock and roll.
It's odd that we don't have Bea on here yet. I hope she's not having internet problems. Mike, great job last night. I didn't get a chance to reach out to you after that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing harder than those types of talks.
Yeah. Even if it's only like 60 seconds long, right?
Yeah.
Sean.
Yes.
Yeah, my screen goes blank. You're in charge.
Okay.
Just giving you a heads up warning today.
I did hear back from or connect with all board members. Bob Umtite called me just a little bit ago saying he'll possibly be 10 minutes late coming on. Sarah confirmed that she likely will not be able to participate. Everybody else was good.
Good. Well, let's go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everyone joining us to another online virtual meeting, even though we all planned on being together today. We do still have the opportunity to have public comment during these meetings. Please remember that public comment will be limited to five minutes and that the board cannot respond. Paulette, do we have any people who have signed up to speak or?
No, we don't.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to? Oh, let's do the official stuff first. Read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Now moving to my first question. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting agenda for today?
Yes, there are a number of additions. Things are moving pretty fast and furious as we get closer to the beginning of the school year. In 1.03 recognitions, we're pleased to present the debut of a couple of our PSA videos that Joe Frohlein from Marshawn High School, Stacy Tool Crawford from Marshawn High School is our lead nurse, Rex Kozak. We're instrumental in putting those together. We're going to have a series of these PSA videos to help guide students towards safely returning to school and safely functioning while they're at school and hopefully they'll be greatly appreciated by parents and the community as well. 2.04 of the consent agenda, we have a contract for services related to choreography for the marching band, which basically is canceling the contract we had this year and postponing it to next year. And then in 4.01, we have the most up-to-date of the adjusted 2020-2021 calendar to go before the board for formal approval. And in 4.02, Amy Harmson, Technology Director, her initial request was for continuation of service for the existing hotspots and since we posted that, we have been able to acquire some additional hotspots. So there's an additional expenditure being requested to be approved to allow for us to have more hotspots than we had originally been able to get a hold of, which is very timely in light of the delayed ability of MediaCom to hook families up. So those are four amendments.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Miller, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The motion carries 5-0. Paulette or Amy, would you let me know if when Bob arrives?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Siders, you have some videos for us.
We do. As Dr. Schutte mentioned, we are excited to premiere a couple of the first two episodes of what is going to be a pretty extensive video series regarding our return to learn and health and safety throughout that process. So I believe Joe Frohlein, who is sort of central to producing this series, is on with us if she's added. Joe, could you go ahead and introduce the video series?
Everyone, please.
Yes, I can do that. She just switched me over. So Stacy and I have been meeting quite extensively with other people around the district and I have to give a shout out to Rosio Villa Gomez because she is doing all of our Spanish interpretation for the videos and our voiceover. So I really appreciate all the hard work that she's doing. We've had some great volunteer kids that you'll see coming up in future videos. You'll see a couple tonight, but there's some really good ones later on. Altogether, we will have seven videos in the series for parents and families to view to help prepare their students for what's expected for the policies and procedures in place for the return to learn plan. So this will go through things like washing your hands, how to get on and off of bus protocol stuff, and what your nurses look like. We want that families in the community to feel really comfortable with all of the steps and procedures that we have put in place, that the administration team has put in place to be the best possible situation for our students. So with that said, the videos are only six minutes or less and I think she's got them queued up and ready to go.
I'm Stacy Tool Crawford, the lead district nurse and the Marshalltown High School nurse for the Marshalltown Community School. Our district understands our students, staff, and community are experiencing difficult times from the storm damage as well as the COVID-19 pandemic. As we prepare to return to school, the health, safety, and welfare of our students, staff, and community is our priority. There are a number of steps we can take to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Our school district will work to educate and promote these steps and we ask that you work with us as families and caregivers to promote these safety steps at home. We are preparing a series of informational videos to show the expectations and guidelines that we have in place for the procedures our students will need to follow when they return to the buildings and if they ride the school bus. We have new signage to help guide our students in buildings through these difficult times. Please talk to your students about staying home when they're ill, handwashing, respiratory hygiene, face coverings in public, and social distancing. This will help to prepare them for the changes that they will see this school year. Together, we can help to stop the spread. The school district recommends all families provide a symptom check with a temperature screen before their student comes to school. Plan ahead to arrange how your student will be cared for if they stay home and notify the school if your child is ill. Please update your child's emergency contact information annually.
So by doing profile bits in here.
Hello, my name is Brenda Villa. You can call me Mrs. Villa or Mrs. Villa. I'm a new school nurse for Anson Elementary and I'm excited to meet all of you and embrace a new learning style this year. Hola, mi nombre es Brenda Villa o señora Villa. Soy la nueva enfermera de la escuela primaria Anson. Estoy emocionada por conocerlos a todos y acoger un nuevo estilo de aprendizaje este año.
Hi, I'm Nurse Heather. I'm the school nurse at Fisher Elementary School. I can't wait to see you all and welcome you to the 2020-21 school year. We're going to have a fun, healthy, safe school year. Can't wait to see you.
Hi, Bobcats. I'm Brittany Applegate and I'm the school nurse at Franklin Elementary. I just wanted to let you know that even though there will be a lot of changes at school this year, we're so excited to see you. Welcome back.
Hi, my name is Megan Bell. I'm the school nurse at Hoagland Elementary. Just wanted to say a huge welcome back to everyone. We missed you and we can't wait to see everyone again.
Okay, good morning, Marshalltown Bobcats. This is Nancy Pines. I'm the school nurse over at Woodbury Elementary and I just wanted to say welcome back to school this fall. We are really excited to see everybody coming back because we've missed you guys very, very, very much. And I'm very excited also to see your new school supplies, which are going to include a mask. It might look like this being disposable. It might look like this and it's one that somebody made for you, but either one is going to work. So hey, we'll see you September 8th and be sure to bring your mask with you that day. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Toni Freezen. I'm a Lenahan School Nurse.
Hi, my name is Christina Malcolm and I am the school nurse at Miller Middle School. We have missed you all so much and we are so excited to have you back. Go Bobcats.
Hey, all you cool Bobcats and Bobkids.
Stop trying to be relevant.
Fine.
Hello, my name is Rosio Villa Gomez. You can call me Miss V.
I have been working in the Marshalltown School District for eight, going on nine years now as a CNA. And this year you'll find me at Marshalltown High School. I am super excited to get to work with you and find out how this very, very, very different school year turns out, but in the meantime, take care.
Hola, guapuros. Hoy vamos a.
Ya para de mami.
Hola, me llamo Rosio Villa Gomez, pero ustedes me pueden llamar señora V. Ha trabajado con el distrito de Marshalltown por ocho, ya va nueve años como CNA y este año me encontrarán en la Marshalltown High School. Estoy super emocionada para llegar a trabajar como ustedes, a conocerlos y saber cómo sale este año escolar que es muy, muy diferente de que otros años, mientras tanto cuídense.
These are the added items for the school supply list. Water bottle, hand sanitizer, and a cloth mask. Estos son los agregados para la lista de útiles escolares. Una botella de agua, un desinfectante de mano o alcohol en gel y una mascarilla de tela.
Always remember to mask up right before you get into the bus. And remember to always mask up right before you get on the bus. Be sure to help your sister or sibling. You can go in together. Recuerda poner su máscara antes de meterse en el autobús y ayuda a sus hermanitos si lo necesitan.
Your bus driver will look a little different this year. They will be wearing a face mask and shield. When you enter the bus, they will offer you some hand sanitizer. Este año su conductor de autobús se verá un poco diferente. Llevará puesto una mascarilla y una careta. Cuando entre el autobús, el conductor le ofrecerá desinfectante para las manos o alcohol en gel.
Make sure you go to the back of the bus and avoid the X's. Do not sit in the area where there's X's. Asegúrense de sentarse al más atrás que pueden en el autobús, pero no se sienten donde están los marcados los X's. Make sure you do not touch the sides of the seats while you're going in interior seats. Asegúrense de no tocar los lados de los asientos mientras que busquen un asiento. But don't worry, siblings can sit together on a seat even if it's marked with an X. Pero no se preocupen, los hermanitos se pueden sentar en el mismo asiento aunque está marcado con un X. Make sure to sit in every other seat. Asegúrense de sentarse en cada otro asiento. Be sure when you're looking for a seat, if there's a family group behind you, you need to skip that seat and go to one in front of it. Asegúrense cuando están buscando un asiento, buscan si hay un grupo de familias sentados, tienen que skipiar ese asiento y va al siguiente. When getting off the bus, make sure that the person is about two seats in front of you so you could stand up and start exiting the bus as well. Cuando se bajan del asiento, cuando se quieran bajar del autobús, asegúrense que la persona en frente de usted está como dos asientos en frente de ustedes para que ustedes comencen a levantar para salir del autobús.
All buses will be sanitized before and after every route and at the end of the day, including handrails, seating, and all areas. Todos los autobuses serán desinfectados antes y después de cada ruta y al final del día, incluyendo pasamanos, asientos, y todos.
So those two first videos that we released, we did have to catch up on filming because of storm damage. And so we were behind a little bit on our schedule, but hopefully by Friday of this week, I will have Miller done and also the basic guidelines for washing your hands, respiratory health precautions, and the symptom check is going to be done again and how to put your mask on. Do you guys have any questions?
Well done. Looks really cool.
Thanks. It was fun to do. We had some great volunteers to work with. Some situations with storm damage and trains that wouldn't be quiet, but you know, you got to work with what you got.
You got a movie star in Miss V too.
Oh, she's phenomenal. I don't ever want to lose her because she's amazing.
Joe, can you talk a little bit about the ones you're working on currently?
Yes, currently we're working on the PPE one and the Miller Middle School. We finished filming both of those. So it'll be, the PPE one is the basic precautions and procedures about wearing your mask and your shield, your handwashing, and then your respiratory etiquette. And what's best for student hygiene as far as aerosol spray. I can never say it right. And then the Miller Middle School one will also go over the no usage of the drinking fountains, the lockers, the directional arrows, the signage that's up at Miller Middle School, and the expectations of not using the auditorium and following the directional arrows and following the restroom guidelines there and also the hand sanitizing stations and how you should sanitize your hands whenever you're using frequently touched surfaces. Then we will do a Marshalltown High School one and that will encompass again all of the directional arrows, the staircases, and which direction is what staircase. Some of the frequently touched surfaces, not using the lockers, not using the drinking fountains, but using the water bottle stations, where to stand outside the nurse's office, things of that nature, how the plexiglass works, how you go in to talk to people behind the plexiglass, what doors you should enter. what doors you should enter, I think that's about, oh, and the temperature check, we'll be doing that one, and the hand sanitizing stations. And then we'll do one at Woodbury Elementary and basically the same guidelines of, if you're a student, what does your day look like? How do you get from place to place? What does it look like in the classroom? Oh yeah, we're doing that at the high school too. You know, how do I fit in my classroom? What do I look for? Things like that. How do I leave my classroom? What does social distancing look like?
Thank you for sharing. Those are remarkable.
Yeah, not a problem. It was a lot of fun to work on.
Okay, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the August 3rd meeting? Or the August 6th boardwork session? Nora, any items of note in personnel?
No ma'am.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, there are quite a number of them. There's a change order for the tennis complex, which will give us a price, a contract sum less than what we had expected. There will be a contract with the Iowa Department of Public Health to perform the, an education program. Student teaching agreement with Grandview. A child and adult care food program contract with the Y. And a COVID-19 season cancellation form for the band. And also, is that in addition to the choreography one that you mentioned, Darren?
They're one and the same.
Okay.
Basically, it's a postponement of what was to be contracted this year to next year.
Okay. Any questions on any of those contracts and agreements? We have nine open enrollments out. Are there any items of note in the bills, Paulette? Questions from the board regarding the financial report? We have a donation in the amount of $250 from AmeriGroup Iowa for one of our employees. We have a project research. Are there any questions on any of those items? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Heightman, so moved.
McGinnis, Heightman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries six zero.
And V, I just wanted to let you know that Bob is here. Okay.
Thank you. No items, Paulette, for... Community?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Moving on to the school year calendar update, Dr. Schutte?
Yes, Amy, if you can pull that up, please. So as everybody knows, as a result of the storm, the land hurricane that we experienced for which we've in some ways lost about a week and a half, school reopening preparation, I'm requesting that the board approve an adjusted school start date, which basically moves the original start date for students, which was Tuesday, August 25th to Tuesday, September 8th. So it's an adjustment of nine days moving forward and we've adjusted our employee pre-service days accordingly. So the pre-service days for all staff or all teachers would be September 1st through the 4th. This calendar reflects slight adjustments and things like parent teacher conferences being moved accordingly, end of the quarters in some cases being moved accordingly to make sure that we have balance between the four quarters and the two semesters to the extent possible. We did adjust in the month of January a PD day, which was scheduled for Friday, January 15th. We repurposed that to Monday, January 25th, which coincides with what will now be the end of the semester and will be more consistent with the other Monday in-service days that we have. The last day for students would be put Friday, June 4th, which means that of the nine days that we've pushed things forward, we're having students make up for those nine days and not make up five of those nine days, similar to what we did two years ago with student contact days when we had an inordinate number of snow days. And the rationale behind that is that a couple of things. One is that we'll be ending June 4th and to push it out any further sometimes hits a point of diminishing returns because of the lateness in the school year, the lack of air conditioning at the high school, summer activity conflicts, assuming that we're in a better place for that than we were this summer as well as summer school opportunities for teachers and such. Something that will be different this year from past years is that with an ordinary snow day, we now have permission to pivot digitally for those days so that we could offer school digitally to all students. So we'll be working on further plans and communications related to that so that what used to be snow makeup days maybe don't need to be lost. I'd say the only exception to that is if we have a significant storm event or an icing event that creates problems for internet connectivity for people, then we would need to look at possibly making those days up, although we still have some latitude based on our student contact hours exceeding what the state minimum requirement is on student contact hours. I have been in discussions with MEA leadership about how we would make up the five teacher contract days. What I have proposed to them is to look at adding a half hour at the end of the day on all pre-service, in-service days throughout the year as well as parent teacher conferences being extended on those Fridays by a half hour and finding an additional half hour in the evening conferences that we hold. That would equate to about just a little bit less than one contract day of the five that we need to make up. And then we would add 15 minutes on to the beginning or the end at the building, principals discretion working in collaboration with the staff, which I think could be highly beneficial in terms of helping provide additional monitoring and support as students are entering school as well as departing from school, which will be challenging times, you know, due to the COVID situation. So the more hands on deck will be better there. We've also talked about in order to make up for the five lost days for paraprofessionals that we would be extending their daily assignments by 15 minutes each day through the end of the school year in order to provide additional support either before school or after school as well. So the last student day, assuming that we have an agreement on that way to make up the contract days, the last student day would be Friday, June 4th and the last staff day would be Monday, June 7th, barring any further needs to extend the school year in order to make up days.
Questions for Dr. Schutte? May I have a motion to approve the adjusted 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented?
Miller, so moved.
Okay, I guess the question I had, I think he's answered. This gives us enough hours to meet Iowa's regulations with only 172 days?
Yeah, we actually, we will still exceed that by almost six days worth of time.
All right, I'm okay with it.
Moved by Miller, seconded by McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries six zero. Hotspots, Amy?
Hello, well, here I am again. So when I first brought to you the idea of hotspots, it was back in April and nobody could know how long we would actually need to leave these activated for our students. We initially used hotspots as a way to help students who are dual enlisted, seniors who needed to graduate, and some other extenuating circumstances for families in the community. And then we went ahead and also used those hotspots for Bobcat University students in the summer school, or for our summer school. So we've gotten great use out of the 300 hotspots that we currently have in an effort to do something that was a little more stable and more cost effective. We went with MediaCom, as you approved, to install in our homes and we approved that for 437 families. MediaCom currently has 88 of those installed and we're making a big push. We actually had one of our people in the tech department completely intended to help get those homes installed with MediaCom. And now with this natural disaster that we just faced, MediaCom's not going to be able to finish in a timely manner with getting those homes installed. We're not paying for MediaCom, we're not paying for people who don't have MediaCom yet. But we still need to get internet in the hands of students. We have hybrid students, we have online learning students. So we have taken the information that we've received from families on who doesn't have internet and we've come up with, we need about 150 more hotspots. And not only do we need more hotspots, but we need your approval to extend the activation of all of our hotspots until December. So that comes with a price tag of $89,977.50.
You said that so softly. Do you want to say that a little louder? And where is this money coming from?
I can let Paulette talk about that, but it should be CARES funding the money that we got for COVID or are anticipating on getting.
It's kind of up in the air right now. We don't know what FEMA is going to do.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We still yet know if FEMA is going to cover technology type items or internet connectivity. So if FEMA doesn't reimburse for part of that, then that would be coded 100% through CARES funding. The more that FEMA will reimburse us for, the more CARES money there is available to cover the things we need to do. But we won't know what FEMA is going to cover until we submit.
Okay.
We also have gear funding that's coming from the federal government through the state, which is specific to technology needs. And we actually just received today an adjustment on the amount that Marsh Town will be receiving. I think it's in the $180,000 range instead of $160,000, but that too will go towards offsetting some of these technology related costs for devices and/or connectivity.
Other questions for Dr. Schutte or Amy?
Yes, okay, so the MediaCom contract, they're not going to be able to fulfill that, correct?
We still believe that they will fulfill it. It's just not going to be timely enough for us. And the getting everything switched over is a long process. So I really believe that we need to anticipate these hotspots being turned on until December, which is what I'm asking for. Everyone here hopefully knowing that it's, it would be my highest priority of being able to deactivate these as soon as possible so we're not paying for them. I would like to plan for December and hope that we'll get everything smoothed out long before then.
So this, this $90,000 or nearly $90,000 would cover through December if we had to leave them on that long?
Yes.
And then you'll deactivate them as quickly as you can?
Yes.
Other question?
Yeah, B, this is Mike. If, if we're in this hybrid model where a student is on two days, off two days, on two days, off two days, that's the model that we're on for at least the first nine weeks, isn't that right, Darren? You're on mute. You're on mute, Darren.
Yes, middle school.
Yeah, and so is it wise to extend the Verizon contract through December? Or is it better to extend it for nine weeks in hopes that everybody's back in school every day, middle school and high school, nine at the beginning of the second quarter? And then they would have, students would have internet access being at school so that we wouldn't need to pay for it with public funds longer than what we might normally have to.
So sorry, Mike, just to be clear, we're not actually-
Virtual learners are all semester. That's one.
Oh, sorry Lisa, go ahead if you were talking.
I was just gonna say for Mike, for the virtual learners at least are using the hotspots, they've committed to the semester. Those 1,068 students, who some of them are the hotspot users, they're not the entire group, but a good portion. So for those, we would need a semester and for sure.
And Mike, also, I'm not asking that we extend the contract. The contract is actually for a full year. And what I could do was suspend after four months and then cancel after six months with no penalty. So technically, our, we're not extending any contract. At any time, I can deactivate these now that we have these, except the 150. I'm just asking to go four months, which still made sense to us because like Lisa said, there are more than 150 that need them at home for the virtual portion. So you're right, if the hybrid students came on, we could get those back and deactivate them immediately.
I think part of the challenge is going to be at any given time, we may need to pivot a classroom or a building or even the whole district for a minimum of two weeks at a time based on state guidelines and requirements to an offsite learning modality. So I think it's probably more realistic to think that for those that have been identified as needing our assistance with internet, that there's a good possibility we may need to accommodate any and all of those students at any given time during the school year because the pivot to digital, it's required now, not voluntary. So, you know, we can do that in increments of nine weeks or, you know, make commitments of nine weeks or a semester or three quarters of the year, we can chip away at that over time in hopes that a vaccine is available and widely distributed and that sort of thing before the end of the school year, but there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. I just unfortunately think we're gonna be in this- unfortunately think we're going to be in this position with students and families that need our help throughout the year.
So this is basically costing about $600 a student to do the hotspots, is that what we're thinking for semester? Is this, is this amount for the 150 new hotspots?
The 29,9992 is what the new spending would be and the 59 is to allow us to leave the others activated until December.
Oh, so it's more than 150 then?
Yeah, we've already purchased 300, you already approved that in April. This is 450 hotspots that would be activated at least through December.
That's probably not an out, I mean, it's expensive, but it's
We've definitely I did share, the last time I asked to purchase these, I shared a breakdown of other vendors versus Verizon. So I have looked at other vendors and how expensive other hotspots and other options are and this was an affordable option as far as hotspots go.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the purchase of 300 hotspots for five months and 150 new hotspots?
Unteed, so moved.
Seconded, McGinnis seconded.
Unteed, McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries six zero. Amy and David?
Dave, I think I have you on here, are you? Are you here?
I am.
All right. Just a second, I will get. Do you have your, oh, there you are, okay. If you want to go ahead, I'll pull up the-
You have the presentation there?
I do.
All right, so it's been a little over a year ago that we introduced the digital learning plan for our school district. There's a lot to that. It, it, until five different portions to, sections to it, leadership, teaching, learning, assessment and infrastructure. As we divide, designed this plan, we also made a table of some outcomes that we wanted to see take place. Not necessarily in just a year's time, but just, you know, as we kept working and growing in our digital learning environments, what we wanted to be reaching for, so we could have some targets. With the situation we got into last year, in some ways, our digital learning plan was halted and some of the work could not continue. In other areas, it was accelerated very quickly. And time and time again, I have been reminded about how lucky we have been to be in the place we are with our ability to have digital learning components for our students and teachers. We were able to quickly, you know, get a voluntary learning plan in place in our return to learn plan for this upcoming year was a lot easier to come up with because of the work we've done over the last several years, so it's, it's one of those things where you don't always look back enough to realize where you were and how far you've come. And I've been on a lot over the last few months thinking about how our teachers and students have been able to navigate through this. While there's still a lot of new learning and some challenges, we could have had a lot more roadblocks in our way if we didn't have what we have and it all begins with access. So having our teachers and students with Chromebooks and some of the digital tools we have made this much, much easier and we'll keep moving forward with this plan as this next year goes on and we'll be putting into place some things that we're incorporating in our return to learn plan as well, so just to kind of highlight some things that have taken place in this plan. We start with the leadership section. We have been evolving a little bit with how we handle some professional development and we used to always have a summer academy that was just in-person time for voluntary learning over the summer. We've changed that, we kind of rebranded that to an online academy that we don't always have just summer, we allow opportunities over the course of the school year as well for teachers to learn about some specific things that are kind of open. And they can kind of do that then when they're most able to and it kind of fits best and at their own pace a little bit, so that's been great to work with. We had some great news with Lenahan getting the computer science elementary grant. That was kind of the missing piece to the puzzle in our computer science work, getting that to go across all grade levels. Unfortunately, we didn't get to kind of see the finale of the school year with them. I'm looking forward to what we can do next year. I know we had plans for a parent involvement tonight with their lunch on the lawn and kind of disappointed we couldn't see that student work in person for that, but I know there's a lot of good things going on with them in that work. And we're continuing, continuing to work on getting external relationships with community partners and having them included in our discussions and work we're doing with the digital means we have in the district. Some highlights from the teaching section. We keep having resources available for new hires for tech integration. New teachers have a lot to learn and technology is a huge section of all of that, and so we've designed some things that allow them a place to go for kind of a a, a one-stop shop for most things where they can get some basics of different tools and things we use at a district level. That's been well received. During our closure, we had all staff take the Google Level One Certified Educator Course. 220 staff passed that, there is an exam for them and they actually earned that credential as certification, so that was some great news and overall I think everybody left that with some new learning to help them with using the Google tools, that G Suite we have for our students and using their Chromebooks. That was one of the first parts of learning we did when we went closed and we've realized over and over again that there's a lot that we took from that. We keep trying to have just-in-time PD for new tools and as we got into the situation we had, like I mentioned this spring, video conferencing, having distance learning. Those are all things were available to us, but we just didn't have to use them a lot. And so getting staff some information on how to do that right in time was possible. We have continued to use our learning management systems, Google Classroom and Canvas being those main things. And Google Classroom being more used at that lower elementary level where it probably hasn't been in the past is something we want to make sure our teachers and students are just familiar with. So in the case a situation comes up where they need to rely on that, it's not going to be new necessarily like it was for them this spring. They can have some prior knowledge and use with that in their classrooms already. And then we're going to be continuing to plan more professional development in the areas that we have in our return to learn plan, so those learning management systems, how to communicate with families virtually and have conferences, using video to help design and deliver lessons and building engagement into digital learning, so it's not always kind of flat and actually has some opportunity for students to respond and work with the material. Will be things that we, we'll start our year off with this year and have opportunities to keep coming back with as the year goes on. In the learning section, we're still working on getting keyboarding instruction into, into our students' hands there and having them more familiar. The ability to type is important, especially as we look at different assessments and things that come up where they're expected to produce something in writing in a certain amount of time. Just having some familiarity with that keyboard does come in handy. Like I mentioned earlier, we had the computers, computer science put in place at Lenahan and we have that now for all, all grades. You know, we keep working with our high-quality digital content and we're going to expand to allow Chromebooks to go home in grades five and six this next school year. Again, getting back to that access, without the access, rest doesn't make much difference, so they'll have that at home as well as at school. We allow with the project-based learning and the core content areas for Miller, seventh grade, was able to complete a project. As I mentioned, some things got put on hold, eighth grade, it was interrupted there. And our students have had an opportunity here, just like our staff members have, to become more familiar with those tools we need to use, like digital learning, learning management systems. We've been thrown into that world and so we've had some learning going on their, well, their way as well with how to navigate those things. Assessment is pretty straightforward, we continue to use those in a lot of contexts. We have digital assessments all around us, from formative classroom level type things to assessments that are available in our curriculum to our fast screeners that we do periodically throughout the school year in our state assessment. So those will still be a part of our world this coming year and as look at how to implement some of those screeners and things in the case where we're not at school, those will be possible to do. I will turn it over to Amy a little bit. Actually, I'll back up one step here, one thing I wanted to mention, part of our digital learning plan that we don't have as an update for you this time is some kind of more concrete data. You've seen probably some graphs in the plan that was presented before and percentages. We give a survey every spring of clarity that just kind of looks at some different areas of tech integration, teaching and learning, our infrastructure, a lot of things that fit right into this plan and with our closure, we were unable to give that survey this year. So we'll keep using our data from the prior year to go from and I am excited to see the types of growth we do find we've made now when we take this, hopefully this spring and can have two years where we've really put a lot of focus into some of this work and been intentional with it and I think we'll see good results.
Thank you, Dave. I just really wanted to take a minute to commend Dave and Lisa Stevenson, the plan that I got to inherit was and is a really good one and robust and something that a lot of districts don't have and I think because of the work through the digital learning plan and then a lot of the PLC work that was being done, Marshalltown really was positioned in a way that other districts weren't and I, I was happy that, you know, I came in and I inherited a one-to-one initiative from kindergarten to 12th grade and I witnessed other UEN schools doing anything beg, borrow and pleading to get thousands of devices for their students and we already had that, so you know, just the teacher's knowledge already going in and the planning was really well done. We added a few things, we expanded that one-to-one actually down to preschool as well, so this year, all of our students will have that technology in their hands and we're actually having the fifth and sixth grade kiddos take those home as well. So we're really positioned for those students to be able to get some work done at home, especially by deploying our hotspots, we will now, this slide will be updated to 450 hotspots. And then we will continue to work with MediaCom to get those families installed so that they can have internet that at some point they can take over and it'll be affordable here in this school district. And finally, we established replacement cycles and even recently, we've really worked with principals and Paulette's team to come up with what exactly that looks like. We came up with a standard for different classified staff and I think we really have a good plan to make this whole thing sustainable. So do you want to do some next steps, Steve?
Yeah, so we, we're in the process this last school year of working with a a technology advisory committee that's kind of been off and on over the last several years, it's kind of had some different purposes of work, but the digital learning plan really gives that group a good mission to work with and to look at those outcomes and look at our progress and set some goals and make sure we're on, on track with some things and keep helping us updating that plan as we keep moving forward. So we're going to keep working with them for this next school year. Monitor those outcomes, identify new areas of need and update and modify that digital learning plan that we created last year.
Do anybody have any questions?
My goodness, you must have made a pretty strong presentation for no questions from the board, that's pretty unusual for this group.
Well, I need to reinforce the thanks to the board for, you know, yearly we come to you for some pretty big purchases along the lines of Chromebooks or digital resources and so your support is definitely what helps us, you know, be able to be in the position we are. And like I've said, that has been something that's come to mind repeatedly over the last several months. We're, we're in a good place and we're able to navigate this a lot better than we could be without that, so thank you.
Thank you both for your work. Moving on to parking lot change order. Welcome to a board meeting, Todd.
He's unmuted.
Todd, are you with us?
Sign. Didn't he have to call in last time?
And now, live from a bunker deep beneath.
I can see you, but I can't hear you. Is he a panelist, Amy?
Yeah, he is. He's not muted. Todd, if you want to mute, you could call in really quick. Or even Todd, if you're downstairs, you could run up to my office.
It's a long hike.
Sean, I've told you my favorite elementary school joke, right?
No.
I don't believe you have. So if you had some cheese and I stole it from you, you know what kind of cheese it would be?
Here we go.
Nacho, nacho cheese. Would it be nacho cheese? That's right.
Now that I've just got a good workout.
Back to our regular programming.
Know that running flights of stairs would be part of your job description.
We're not supposed to be running in school anyway. But, no, anyway, my change order was for the parking lot. During the milling process, we found several areas that went above the initial bid where, you know, the pavement was just gone at that point. Ended up being 235.61 additional square yards that needed full-depth patching which came to an which came to an amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two, sixty-two. Excuse me. The approved bid was for the amount initially of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. With this change, it would move it to two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, which still keeps me below the two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that was originally budgeted.
Questions for Todd?
It's really nice to drive on now, Todd. It looks good and it's nice and smooth.
Yep, and I got it all painted as well. I kind of felt bad because I went ahead and approved it, but where we were with the road closure and, you know, we would have been weeks out at that point, and I probably would have been hated by the community by then.
May I have a motion to approve change order number one for the Marshalltown High School Parking Lot Project as presented?
Miller, move for approval.
Miller, anteet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries six-zero. Thanks for running up the steps, Todd.
Yep, I'll go log in on my laptop for later so I can give you a storm update.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Going down will be easier. Dr. Shutey, it's the board policy time of the evening.
So for first readings, we have four policies coming forward that were amendments to existing policies. One, Sean had reviewed, which is two oh one point two with a new number two hundred point two, the legal status of the Board of Directors. And we had four oh nine point three E two Employee Family and Medical Leave Request Form, four oh nine point three R one Employee Family and Medical Leave Regulation, and six oh one point two School Day that incorporates remote learning during emergencies. All of those were amended. There have been no changes since they were reviewed at the last board meeting.
May I have a motion to amend those four policies?
Hyman, so moved.
Hyman Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries six-zero.
Also, we have five policies which were new that were recommended by IASB or ALLERS. We have policy one oh five Discrimination and Harassment Based on Sex Rehibited. We have five oh nine point one E one Request for Remote Learning Form, nine oh seven District Operation During Public Emergencies, nine oh seven R one District Operations During Public Health Emergency Regulation, and six oh four point one one Appropriate Use of Online Learning Platforms. Those have not been changed since they were initially reviewed at the last meeting. They are all new policies emanating from our most recent circumstances with COVID.
May I have a motion to adopt those five policies and waive the second reading?
So moved, Hyman.
Seconded, McGinnis.
Hyman McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries six-zero. Dr. Shutey?
The initial review policies are being proposed by Dr. Ryan, and so I'll let her take over on that.
Alrighty, so we have, Amy, do you mind bringing that up on the screen section so that everyone could see the big section up? Yeah, there you go. Perfect. So four oh nine point one, this is really just following along with the IASB recommendations. I'm really excited to see that they took a lot of that differentiation between licensed and classified and certified. All of those, like I said, those differences, they took those out of the mix. And so really what we're doing is consolidating them because we don't treat them any differently anyway. And then taking out that personal leave section, we speak to personal leave in the handbooks. And then, sorry, so that's four oh nine point one, again aligning with IASB. The next one there in the list is, I think, four oh nine point two. This is, again, just aligning with that IASB policy. And we took what they had recommended, and then there were other leaves that you can or don't have to include or whatever. We took that to look at what our district does, how we implement our policies and our leaves. And all of these leaves are also in our employee handbook and appendices and sometimes in the contracts as well. So this is just kind of aligning with our practice. Four oh nine, or sorry, four is four fifteen. Oh, sorry, four oh nine, so you can go in order, Amy. Four oh nine point two dash E one. This would be the form that employees would need to provide us if they are requesting to take leave through the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FFCRA. This is the form that's recommended that we use just to keep everything systematic and standardized. So we would provide this to an employee once they let us know that they are trying to take this leave, and they would fill that out. The next one is four oh nine two E two. This is the Expanded Family and Medical Leave Act, if you recall from our meeting the other week. The FMLA has expanded one, one, I guess, reason for how or why you could take FMLA. And so this is the form that you would take, saying that you're requesting FMLA, that extra new reason. So this is another form that you would need to fill out for that, again standardized and recommended by our legal team. Next one is four oh nine eight Licensed Unpaid Leave. As you can see here, this one is entirely just deleted and unnecessary. We speak to this some in our employee handbook and appendix, so that is recommended for deletion. And let's see, I'm trying to think of how it can be faster here. Four nine seven, another deletion. Military service that speaks to an FMLA anyway, we don't need that, it's redundant, and no longer recommended to have multiple places speaking to that. Four fourteen point one. Again, vacation not needed. We speak to this in other ways, so redundancy. Bereavement leave, same thing. We speak to this in the handbook and appendices for each employee group. Four fourteen point six, another deletion, same reason, jury duty, no need for this. And then four fourteen seven, sorry, way to bear with me, folks. That is another deletion. These are, and four fourteen eight, these are when they had classified and certified separately anyway. So this was the exact same thing basically for the classified staff, no longer necessary. And so it's just really, you know, trying to clean these up. And then the last one is a, it speaks to professional leave for professional purposes. What's highlighted in yellow is new text. So some deletions for redundancy purposes, and then some new FFCRA types of documents that are needed for that new legislation. And I should note that those would be null and void come January first since that law is no longer valid after January first unless there is a change by our legislature. But as of right now, that leave is only good through December thirty-first, so those would expire.
Okay, so four oh nine one, four oh nine two, four fourteen, four oh nine two E one, four oh nine two E two will need to come back as a first reading at our next meeting. May I have a motion to delete four oh nine seven, four oh nine eight, four fourteen one, four fourteen four, four fourteen six, four fourteen seven, and four fourteen eight?
So moved, anteet.
Anteet, Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries six-zero. Well, thank you for making short work of those policies.
Can I ask? And I apologize in advance, but is there a Department of Redundancy department that we have?
I think that's umbrellaed in my department, Bob.
I don't know, Nora, that could be mine too.
While you're on, Adam, anything of note in communications?
Yeah, it was quite a busy last couple of days for communications here. We, I don't even know how many messages in total have been sent out, and more will be sent out with regular updates for as long as we continue to be in this pattern with storm recovery. Our, I think this previous, the last week or so has really shown the importance of social media for how people get their information. We had a lot of engagement the past seven days on Facebook. We got twenty likes, which is quite a few for just one week. That was, that's August twelfth through the eighteenth, so about a week. Engagement in general, so that's just how many people are looking at our Facebook posts, was up more than half again, so fifty-five percent since August twelfth. And our page views are up almost double, about ninety-six percent. And that's all compared to seven days prior to the last seven days. And Twitter, where probably is the form of social media that many of the folks in our community maybe don't use as much to keep up with us, we actually saw six more followers. Now, this is in the last twenty-eight days. Most of those were in August. But last twenty-eight days, six followers may not sound like a lot, but for our Twitter page, that's that's pretty impressive growth. And I am looking at ways to continue to grow that for our Twitter presence. Otherwise, we saw over forty percent improvement or increase in our number of impressions. So in Twitter jargon, an impression is any time a tweet is seen or shared by someone. Anytime one of ours is shared by someone, it causes an impression. So, again, that's all in the last month. But it's this storm really, you know, is making what was already a very difficult year for our families even harder. And so I know I and our leadership team are doing our best to keep everyone updated on which buildings have power, along with all of the return to learn things that we've been continuously updating folks on for the past several months.
Thank you. Mike, you get to do two policies for our next meeting, which will be September eighth.
Got it.
Todd, did you say that you were going to give us an update on storm damage? Or did I just think I heard that?
Yeah, he's going to do that. And Adam, can you talk about the rescheduling of the Mark Perna event once more?
Yes, yes, that was, so we had originally, actually tomorrow was supposed to be the public presentation that speaker and author and generational expert Mark Perna was supposed to share a keynote tomorrow evening, but for obvious reasons, we had to push that back. And he will now be doing both the public presentation to the Marshalltown and surrounding community about working with young folks. That presentation has been moved to September twenty-eighth. And that is a Monday. So his presentation will take place during the same time slot. It's six PM to seven fifteen PM. And I believe we're still planning on it being virtual via Zoom, so it'll be similar to kind of how we're doing our board meeting right now. Folks will be able to participate in much the same way. And again, it's a free keynote. It'll be open to anyone who wants to see it and joins in with the link. And then Mr. Perna is also going to be presenting internally to our staff as well. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Theron, but I believe that is also going to happen on the twenty-eighth. I think originally it was planned to be the public keynote was going to be on the twentieth, August twentieth, and then the staff presentation was going to be on the twenty-first of August. But now they've been put together in the same day.
Correct.
Okay, so that's where we are on that. I am going to continue pushing out materials. I am working with Mark's team to get updated flyers and an updated video promotional material, and I will be pushing that out as soon as that's ready.
Okay, thank you. Would you make sure that those changes in dates appear on the board calendar, please?
Yeah, Adam, you can make, just give those times to Gabby.
Do we see Todd anywhere?
Technical difficulties, he might be coming up again right now.
Okay, well, we'll go on and talk about what did we do tonight that will make education better for our students in the district?
We approved the hotspots for the kids that don't have internet.
I liked hearing the update on the digital learning plan. I thought that was, there was a lot of good stuff in there. It was really good to hear.
The videos were nice to watch, so thank you to all that help with that.
Well, my quote this evening comes from Not Hong. Then Not Han is a Buddhist monk. He became a Buddhist monk at the age of sixteen and has had spent a good deal of time with Martin Luther King Jr. in the peace movements. He runs a peace institute. So my quote comes from him for this evening. And he says, "If we believe that tomorrow would be bitter, we can bear a hardship today." And there's Todd.
All right, back upstairs again. All right, as far as storm update, obviously, everybody chipped in, did a great job as far as getting everything cleaned up and mopped up as quickly as we could with headlamps and everything else in the buildings to get us going. I've met with the insurance. Pretty much, I'd say a lot of our damage, we didn't really have anything that was overly extensive as far as, you know, roofs being as far as, you know, roofs being ripped off or anything like that. I did have a couple of skylights in places that were damaged and had a little bit of water come in. Um, Miller, on the west side, I will have a little bit of, uh, sheet rock repair on the interior of the building, but for the most part, interior wise, we were okay. The auditorium, I will have a little bit on the backside of it. We had a pretty good section of it where the wind had started working and pulling at the siding. We'll have replacement there. Uh, many of the rooftop units that were blown around. Uh, Bill Hanson, our HVAC, has been and checked a lot of them. Plus also, uh, B&amp;G HVAC here in town is, uh, helping us to get some of them repaired. A lot of them were just kind of flipped off the bases. But others, you know, obviously had line sets twisted and needed electrical repairs. Uh, a couple of days after, we had most of our roofs watertight. What our guys weren't able to get, I had a roofing company that's come to work with us and they got a lot of that all sealed up. And it'll be back to finish, you know, bigger areas where there was more, more damage and they actually need to get in and repair it 100%. Other than our loss of power, everybody, as if today, is powered back up. Um, I haven't quite checked with Amy today, but I think we have internet everywhere as well.
Except Woodbury and the bus barn.
Oh, Woodbury and the bus barn, I guess internet is still down, but I finally got, obviously, Central Office and Anson. Oh, about 6:30 last night, I was able to get power back to those places and the high school. The electrical issue we had out there corrected with some outside contractors, so it's actually back to 100% electrical capacity. Reached out to several contractors to help us in our repairs and I'm currently working with our insurance agent. So, as time goes, I'll keep everybody updated on what needs left to be fixed or what has been fixed during then, but for as hard as it hit the town, I think we were kind of lucky, you know, it really didn't destroy more than what it did to us, so.
And let's see, since you've, um, taken over the directorship, you had the pandemic.
Yep.
Pressure. Um, how you hanging in there, Todd?
I'm doing good. As, as long as winter goes good, I'll be fine.
Don't say that.
Don't say it.
Yeah, I know, I'm used to it anyway, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, we need to move into closed session now. You have two links for those sessions. There are two. Um, so you'll need to go to the first link for the first student A JP. Um, and I need a motion to move into closed session to conduct a hearing on the suspension or expulsion. In this case, readmission of a student is provided by Section 21.51E of the Code of Iowa.
E?
E.
B, can we get that motion?
I don't know what you're saying.
I don't know what's wrong with my computer. Can we get that motion with the?
Yeah, I, I just asked for it.
But can we get it in the next meeting so I can get it on that recording instead of this one?
Oh, okay. All right. So, um, at this point, um, I would suggest that we meet in, uh, your first Google link um, at 6:35. That will give you a chance to stand up and stretch before you need to sit down again. And at that time, we'll do the closed session motion for Paulette to record. Are there any questions before we leave this link and move to a new one? Okay, see you in eight minutes on the first Google link. Thank you all.